And posting it to our website, parents who were unable to attend one of our town halls. Before we get started, I just want to go over some Google Meet norms. The first one is to just make sure that your mic is muted. This gives everybody an opportunity to hear what's being presented. And again, if you do not wish to be part of the recording, just make sure that you guys turn your cameras off. Second, to just make sure we're being respectful of others' viewpoints and opinions, especially when we're typing in the chat or when we're using the Padlet. As Mr. Tucker mentioned earlier, we will be using a website called Padlet for you guys to be able to post your questions. This gives you the opportunity to see all of the questions that parents have, because it might be something that you're asking. And you'll also be able to see those responses. So please make sure that you're using Padlet. If you hear a little ding dong in the background, those are just parents asking to be let in. So you'll hear that frequently while I'm speaking. And if your question is a little more in depth, just feel free to go ahead and email your, email the administrators and we'll be able to answer those questions. You can go back. There we go, right there. So just a couple of things we're going to talk about today. We're going to be talking about Canvas. We're going to be looking at how we'll be grading the platform that you guys will use to view those grades, how we'll be taking attendance, the different modes of communication that we're going to be using this school year, the revised schedule that will take effect next week on Tuesday, September 8th, and any of the frequently asked questions that we were able to get from that survey that was sent out earlier this week. If you haven't, if you're new to Stony Point, you haven't had a chance to come up to the school or anything like that, since we're kind of locked down right now. Mr. Tucker, as we've mentioned earlier, is the school principal. Ms. Trogdon is our assistant principal. This is her first year with us. And then myself, we also have several teachers in the chat today. Helping us with our presentation is Ms. Lashewski, a fourth grade teacher, and Ms. White will be our timekeeper, as well as our monitor of the chat. And as I said earlier, we have several fourth grade and fifth grade teachers present as well. Alright, so Canvas is the magic word, and I'm sure that all of you guys have heard this many different ways in the last couple of weeks from your students. You may have heard the teacher talking about Canvas while your child has been on Google Meet. But Canvas is basically a platform that the county has adopted. It's a way for them to manage and present information to the students online. So this is where your child will be able to access any of their assignments. They'll be able to watch any of the videos that the teacher has prepared for them. And the teacher will be able to monitor how often that child is checking that assignment, the progress of that assignment. And then once that assignment is graded, they're able to link it to Power School. So it'll go straight to that portal that you can use for checking grades. I'm going to talk about Power School in my next slide. It's highly interactive. So students, once they log in, if you haven't had a chance to see, when your student logs in, they're able to just click on the subjects. They're able to click on the assignments. They're able to click on their videos. And it's, it is user-friendly. A lot of our kids, we're just getting used to it. I know everyone's still very used to Google Classroom. So it's a little different, the setup, but it is very interactive. Once you get the hang of it and once you start using it. So in these last couple of weeks, our teachers have really focused on getting the students acclimated to Canvas. So they have slowly been introducing them on how to log in, how to submit an assignment, how to download an assignment, things like that. They've also provided them with tutorials and videos so that they can get used to this program. I know a lot of people are wondering why we chose Canvas, because Canvas is a system that a lot of universities use. The good thing about Canvas, and since it was adopted throughout the district, is that your students, starting from kindergarten all the way up through high school, will be using Canvas. And it'll be an easy transition when they graduate from high school into college, since it's a system that they'll be familiar with. So that's why the district chose to go with this. Now grading, I know grading and attendance is going to look a little different this year than it did when we left last year in the fourth quarter. I know that if students came to class, they were automatically given credit. But this year, there will be grades for the assignments that are going to be posted in Canvas. Parents can check through Power School. And this is the portal that teachers use for posting grades. So for example, if I gave out quizzes 1, 2, and 3, and homework 1, 2, and 3, I can go ahead and put those grades for those assignments for each of my students. And parents have an opportunity to go in and they can actually see what the assignment, the title of the assignment was and what the grade was the child received. If you are familiar with Power School, you used it last year. The portal is still the same, the login is still the same. If you're new to Stony Point, we will be sending out letters in the next couple of weeks. It'll probably come through Dojo or an email or through your Remind, but you will be receiving information on how to access Power School so that you guys can stay abreast of your child's grades. If you notice that your child is falling behind in any of their coursework after you have looked at Power School, please make sure you get with that teacher so that you can explore options for making sure that that child gets caught up. I know right now, things are a little different. Our dynamic is a little different. So kids might not be turning in their assignments on time. So just make sure that you're staying in touch with that teacher so they're aware of your situation. So as we transition, if you can go back, one more, Ms. Lashewski. Okay, perfect. So as we transition to our schedule for next week, there are some suggested weekly number of assignments that the children will get per subject. And so for their ELA classes, they're going to get anywhere from two to five assignments a week. For their math classes, anywhere from two to five assignments. And that's your fourth and your fifth graders. For science, it's a little different. Fourth and kindergarten through fourth grade, they can receive anywhere from one to two. But our fifth graders, they're going to receive between two to five assignments a week. And then with social studies, it's also two to five. We're encouraging our students to complete their assignments when they're due. However, again, with our students learning remotely right now, we understand that the dynamics of everyone's family or situation is a little different. So teachers have been told to give the students five instructional days to complete an assignment. So they will have a little bit of a grace period. But again, if you notice that your child is falling way behind on their assignments, just make sure that you contact that teacher so she's aware of what's going on. Okay. Alright, attendance. Like I had said earlier, we will be taking attendance while we are on a remote system. It is a little different, though. So a student can be considered present for daily attendance if they are able to complete a daily assignment that the teacher provides them with. And again, you'll be checking Canvas for those assignments. And they were, or they were able to attend one of the live sessions that they'll be doing through Google Meet. So again, if the child is unable to attend a live session, but later on that evening, they were able to access Canvas and they were able to complete the assignment, then that child is considered present. So I don't want you guys to feel like if the child misses that live session, that they're going to be considered absent. If they can't make it to that live session, then they still have an opportunity to complete that assignment and be counted absent. And the teacher can go back and change that for them.
Ms. Velazquez?
Yes.
There's a question in the chat. It said, "Are the teachers responsible for modifying workloads for students with IEPs?"
Yes, so the teachers should have received those IEPs and they will be making those modifications. Okay, were there any other questions about that or was that the only one?
That was the only question at this time.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Trogdon.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you today about our communication. The home and school communication for Stony Point has always been very important. But this year, it has become vital that we keep that line of communication open. Of course, we do have our communication that we have kept in place, which is our webpage, our school telephone number, which is available from 8 to 4. You can call and leave a message and the teacher will get back to you or their email. So we still have those pieces of communication. Along with that, we have our parent link. Our parent link calls are made out, made when needed, and they're called to phone numbers that you have down as your primary phone number in Power School. So if you had a call to a phone number that you had down there and you wanted it to a different one, then you need to call the school to change that primary phone number. Or if your phone number changes, you need to call the school and make sure you change that. If you're not getting these parent link phone calls, then what you need to do is you need to call the school and let them know that you're not getting the numbers. In K-2, we have Class Dojo, and in 3-5, we have Remind. Remind is new for some of you, but the teachers have sent the information out so that you can join it. It is a communication app. All you have to do is download the app and the teacher will give you a code to get in. The big thing is to remember that these codes need to be kept private. Some of you have your children in daycares or at a friend's house or a grandparent's house, and you think that they need the information, so you give them the codes. Well, a lot of private things are put in the Remind. If a teacher sends a message to you personally, they think it's going to you. So therefore, it might have the student's ID number. It might have other pertinent information, like they're not completing an assignment or they're having some difficulties that you might not want somebody else to know. So please make sure that you keep those codes private. If you have any trouble getting on Remind, if you contact the teacher, they will help you to get on. Thank you. Next is Mr. Tucker. He's going to go over the schedule for next week.
Thank you, Ms. Trogdon. I was just responding to some questions in the, on the Padlet regarding the schedule. I think this is the biggest area that many parents have had questions with. You know, we had a number of questions once we went to remote, and now we're receiving questions about the revised schedule, which at Stony Point, we'll be implementing the schedule starting on Tuesday, September the 8th. This, this is to give our teachers this week time to plan for the adjustment, as well as to give parents an opportunity to become familiar with the schedule changes. For the schedule changes, as you see on the slide, we're still maintaining a six-hour day. So the timeframe is essentially the same. We will be reducing lunch from an hour and a half to one hour. So lunch for our school will be from 11 to 12. And most grade levels, the lunch period will be from 11 to 12 o'clock. At Stony Point, we are a meal distribution site. So if you choose to drive through the meal distribution pickup at the back of the school, then the window for that is from 11 to 12:30. And we just got approval, we just got word from the state that lunches will be free, will continue to be free for all students. So we're still operating under that summer meal program. That's lunch for today and breakfast for the next day. We are still maintaining a few breaks, but in this revised schedule, the breaks are anywhere between 5 to 10 minutes. Before or currently, we're using a 20-minute break period, but we're reducing that time to between 5 to 10 minutes, depending on the grade level and what's developmentally appropriate. The biggest piece with this schedule change is that all of our synchronous instruction will take place prior to lunch. So really, what we're doing is repackaging these various components of the teacher interface with students. So all of the time now is being shifted to prior to lunch, and the time after lunch will be reserved for independent practice and independent activities on the part of the student. So the asynchronous instruction will take place after lunch. Small group will take place before lunch in most instances. There will be a coordination. If we have teachers or support staff who are meeting with children after the lunch period, we'll be coordinating with parents to see if there's a hardship with that. If there's not a hardship, then we will continue to meet with a few students after lunch, but the majority of our time will be before lunch. The teachers will have office hours between 2 and 3 o'clock. Those office hours will be reserved for students who are having difficulty with concepts or if they just wanted to check in with their, with their teacher, conferences with parents, and also staff meetings and grade level planning opportunities between 2 and 3 o'clock. Another word about our schedule. You know, we're going from a 45-minute block of time to a 20-minute block of time, and that seems alarming. That's not much time for our teachers to go over what they need to go over. However, with that 45 minutes, on our current schedule, let's say we have 45 minutes for reading. Well, in essence, that 45 minutes, our teachers are still confined to between 15 to 25 minutes of direct instruction and live teaching. And they stay on or stay in the Meet for the next 20 minutes to provide an opportunity for students to ask questions and those types of things as the students are doing independent work. So now that 45-minute block is in essence being cut in half. So the 20 minutes for live instruction and direct teaching or whole group teaching. And then a little bit later in the morning, the teachers come back to meet with students in small group. And so on that small group time, every child may not be meeting with their teacher every day. Some teachers might meet with, with all of their students during that small group time. Most of them will be meeting with small groups in essence of students. So your child's teacher may only meet with your child on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Tuesday and Thursday, or maybe just on Wednesday. It all depends on that content area and the group that your child may be in, based on their performance in class or what the teacher has observed. So that small group time may be flexible in terms of when your child will be meeting with the teacher. And again, all of the independent blocks, there are 30-minute blocks for math, 30-minute blocks for reading, 30-minute block for science, and like a 15-minute block for social studies, and there's a 15-minute block for independent reading, as well as a 20-minute block for Success Maker or iStation. We get advanced to the next slide. I think I gave away the next slide. Yeah, so this gives you an idea or a breakdown of those various time components. So here, as you know, on our current schedule, we're starting at 7:40 with our morning announcements, et cetera. On this schedule, we're starting at 8 o'clock. So in essence, we're starting the day at 8 o'clock and we're really ending the day at around 2 o'clock. So the student's day is, instead of 7:40 to 3:10, is going to 8 o'clock to about 2 o'clock or so. And also with this schedule, as you can see, most of the interfacing time, the synchronous time with the teacher will wind down about 10:30 or 11 o'clock. So in this example, and your, your child in fourth or fifth grade, their, their schedule may look slightly different, but the premise is going to be the same. The instructional blocks and these various components are going to have the same units of time. They just may be arranged differently based on your child's teacher and/or grade level. So we start the day with morning announcements, that's about 10 minutes, and also morning meetings. The morning meetings and/or the morning announcements provide us with a sense of community. You know, in those 20-minute chunks, the teachers are just going in straight to content. So they don't have much of an opportunity to build relationships with the students, for students to interact and express themselves and to share information. So this is an opportunity for us to maintain that sense of community by having various adults to present morning announcements or by, you know, reducing our morning announcements and having more of a morning meeting time in the morning. Then we go into a 20-minute instructional block, let's say that's reading, then followed by a 20-minute math block, then we have a 10-minute break. The kids need those breaks. Sitting and staring in front of a computer all day is extremely draining. And so we want to give them that opportunity to have a little potty break, grab a snack, you know, just kind of stretch or what have you, and then get back on task. We have another 20-minute instructional block here in blue right after that first break. That might be science. And then we have an instructional block that may be social studies or that might actually be, you know, either science. Then we have the, another little break of about 10 minutes, and then we have small group. About 15 minutes for reading, 15 minutes for math, and those small groups rotate every day. Then we have a 30-minute block of time that is for content-specific independent work. In this example, let's say that's science, and then you have lunch and recess for an hour, and then we come back and you see this as like a two-hour block. So that would probably be a 30-minute block of independent practice for math, a 30-minute block of independent practice for reading, a 10-minute break, a 20-minute opportunity for Success Maker and/or iStation, and then a 15-minute block for social studies and a 15-minute block for independent reading. And then we go into that 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock timeframe, which would either be remediation or enrichment. You know, for select students, the teachers may be pulling students to provide remediation or enrichment, providing that opportunity for students who have questions for their independent practice to ask and check in with the teacher, or for teachers to conference with parents and follow with parents' concerns or emails or phone calls, and also to meet as a grade level team or for our school functions. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to hand it back over to Ms. Velazquez, and we're going to tag team on our frequently asked questions. And again, parents, if you have questions, feel free to drop those in the, on the Padlet.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So again, earlier this week, we had sent out that survey so that we can kind of get an idea of what some of your questions were. We hope that we answered some of that when we went over the schedule, when we talked about Canvas, a little bit about attendance, things like that. But I think a lot of people are, are wondering, you know, and they're anticipating if school is going to return in September. And right now, the answer is we really, we don't know. We have been instructed that we will be on Plan C for at least six weeks, which takes us to September 25th. And then the school will decide, you know, if it's safe for our children to return back to school and transition us to Plan B. Once we get word on that and when that transition will take place, we'll make sure that we contact our parents so that that way you guys can go ahead and start making your plans. Earlier this week, a lot of our teachers reached out to our parents. You may have seen a survey that came out over the summer that wanted to get an idea of what, what option you would want for your child if we did go back to school face-to-face, if you wanted them to stay remote, if you wanted them to be blended. If you didn't get an opportunity to fill out that survey, our teachers sent that out to you in the last couple of days. So if you've not filled that out yet, please make sure you do that because the county is using that survey to help make those plans for when we do transition to Plan B. The next question was, will there be an option to continue remote learning if the district determines face-to-face will resume before we feel safe? And yes, there is an option for that. You can choose remote learning full-time at your current school. So you wouldn't have to unenroll or anything like that. Your child would just continue remote learning when we do transition to Plan B. When will EC and ESL services begin? ESL services will begin next week. I spoke with that teacher. And then EC services have already begun. The next question was, can families change their minds as to in-person versus virtual? So this is in reference to that survey that I was speaking about. Once you guys have made your decision, again, because the county is basing those cohorts off the survey, they're creating the bus routes, things like that, they're really asking that parents weigh their options and make sure that you select the option that fits best for you because whichever option you pick will be the option that you have to stick with for the duration of Plan B. So it's very important that you guys decide as a family what option's going to work best for you for that. We have multiple breaks now. Will these breaks continue as we are home learning? Absolutely. As Mr. Tucker said, breaks are so very important for our children right now. We don't want them sitting and staring at a computer from 8 o'clock until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That's just not healthy for them. So having those breaks in between gives them the opportunity to get their wiggles out, gives them a chance to go to the bathroom, get a snack, get some water, take a break from staring at their computer screen. So those, those breaks are very important. Next slide, please. Okay, what plans or what are the plans for returning to school and safety precautions being taken to ensure our children are going to be in a safe environment? There are some that are already, we have already discussed. For example, daily temperature checks. So your student, once they come on campus, whether it's from the bus or whether they walk to school or if they're dropped off in the car rider line, their temperatures will be checked. Parents and guardians, there's going to be a survey that's going to be sent home for the bus riders. So as they're getting on the bus, they're going to turn that survey into the bus driver, and it's basically a survey that parents will fill out and sign, saying, no, my child isn't experiencing any of these symptoms, things like that. But they will have to turn that form in every day that they get on the bus. We're going to make sure that our children are, are remaining socially distant. We've already painted our little spots on the ground. So we'll be, you know, teaching our children to make sure that they're keeping that distance. Masks will be required. There's obviously going to be limited amounts of students within the building, limited amounts of students on the bus. So again, going back to that survey, if you are going to need transportation, please make sure that you guys select that so that you're going to get a spot on the bus because the, the capacity on the bus has been reduced. When we would have been able to carry 72 children, we're only going to be able to carry 22 children. So it's very important that if you need that transportation, that you select that. Children will be able to bring their water bottles, and they're going to be staying within the classroom. They're not going to be going from class to class for their resources or lunch, things like that, just to reduce their movement within the building and their exposure to other people. The next question dealt with checking out books. How can we get copies of books from the library? E-books can be checked out or viewed through NCY's Owl Public Library in Destiny. And Ms. Quant, she is our media resource teacher. She has actually been teaching the kids during their resource time how to access these books, how to log in. So that way, they have, they understand how to access those resources that are available to them. And then lastly, what is the best way to monitor my students' progress throughout the year? And that again goes back to Power School. So if you're familiar with Power School, like I said earlier, the login that you would have used last year is the same login. The app is still the same. If you're new to Stony Point Elementary School, in the next couple of weeks, teachers will be reaching out to you with that login. But you will actually be able to download the app to your phone and you can keep track of your child's grades. And as the teacher is posting those assignments, it'll actually send you a notification. So you can check it as those teachers are posting those grades. So you can always stay abreast about their, their grades.
Ms. Velazquez, we have a couple of questions. Do you want to take those now?
Yes.
Okay, we have, the question is, your bullet point says that your choice is for the duration of Plan B, but on the Padlet, it says you can change at the end of the grading period. Can you tell me which answer is correct or explain how both are right? Thank you.
From what, from my understanding, when I asked this question, you have to, you have to stick with that, that choice for the remainder of Plan B. I don't know how long Plan B is going to be, but that's, that was the information that I was given. If I was wrong, I'll go back and I'll fix that. But from what I was told, it was, that's what you have to stick with. That's why it's very important that you guys make that selection so we can go ahead and submit that.
Yeah, we have, you're pretty much be locked in for a minute, as Ms. Velazquez said, because there's so many moving parts that, so, so much depends on what selections the parents opt for. That deals with transportation and buses, that deals with our cohorts, that makes sure that we're within our 33% capacity. So there are so many pieces that go along with that. But from the parental perspective, the more information you know, that could dictate what your decision is. If it's the blended piece or if it's the remote learning full-time. But the remote learning full-time, as Ms. Velazquez said, is only an option for the duration that we are in Plan B. If the school system were to go, or let's say if the governor allows schools to go to Plan A and they can select either A, B, or C. If Cumberland County chooses to go to A, then that full, that remote learning full-time, that will dissolve at that point in time. So the county gave the option of the Virtual Academy, the Cumberland Academy, which would be a year-long virtual opportunity or remote learning opportunity for parents.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Another thing I wanted to mention was, I'm not sure if you guys have had a chance to visit our Stony Point website recently. But on that Stony Point website, we have a link to our YouTube page now. So we actually have a couple of videos of teachers, grade levels, introducing themselves. And as we get closer to transitioning to Plan B, I'm going to post a video for procedures for getting on the bus, getting off the bus, things like that. It is going to look a little different this year with social distancing and how they load, how they unload. So I'm just going to reach out to parents. I'm really going to need your support, especially at those bus stops, to make sure that they're lining up a very specific way so that when they load the bus, the children are seated in a certain way. So I'll, I will be posting a video for what that will look like as we get closer to transitioning to Plan B. But if you haven't had a chance to visit our website, just make sure you take a look at it and go ahead and subscribe to our YouTube channel. You can also find a video there from administration.
I also want to lift up a option for parents as well. Putting in the chat box, a link. The county is also offering parents an opportunity for something called Twilight Learning. So if, let's say, for instance, if your child is having difficulty with logging in during the day. So let's say you have a child in fifth grade, they're assigned to their classroom teacher, but there are two or three days each week when you know that they may be staying with a relative and they don't have access to the internet or they're not able to get the child on, then they have the opportunity to, one, you know, of course, log into Canvas at their leisure, watch any of the recorded videos that the teachers have posted and complete their assignments. But if they need that live instruction from a grade-level teacher, they can participate in the Twilight Learning through Cumberland County Schools. And that's an opportunity for your child to receive live instruction in reading, math, and science for fourth and fifth graders from 6 o'clock PM to 7 o'clock PM. And so that's a free opportunity. Now that, you know, they don't have attendance there and they're not doing assignments or anything like that. It's not like the Virtual Academy is just an opportunity for students to log in, receive some real-time instruction from a, and face-to-face from a teacher between 6 o'clock and 7 o'clock. And I just put that link in the chat box because the county needs to know roughly how many parents would be interested in taking advantage of that opportunity because they will be selecting teachers or trying to recruit teachers based on the number of interests that parents have. And they're doing it by attendance area. So our students here at Stony Point will either be taught by Stony Point teachers, New Century Elementary teachers, or Honeycutt Elementary teachers. And that should start up next week on September 8th.
Okay, are there any other questions in the chat, Ms. White?
No, Mr. Tucker handled one by sending an email, so it's all good. Thank you.
Okay, I think one just...
With the survey, real quick as well, that many of you may have received a Remind from your, or an email from your child's teacher about the Plan B transportation survey. If you didn't receive a link from your child's teacher, If you didn't receive a link from your child's teacher, it's quite possible that you've already completed that survey or a similar survey this summer before the student started up and you indicated yes or no to transportation, et cetera. Or maybe you did the survey this summer, but you did not indicate transportation. So we had a list, those parents that received that link, we needed some information. The district needed some information from you, so we sent that out. And we've had overwhelming response. I'm, I'm, I'm checking it now. I mean, we've had six hundred and sixty-eight parents to respond and we had like seven hundred and forty that we needed to get information from. So the parents are doing an awesome job of responding and filling out that survey. We don't know about the, I see some, a question about prime time. Um, I believe right before the decision was for us to be on Plan C, to continue on Plan C, as opposed to come back on Plan B. The county was trying to explore the option of prime time being available on those two weeks that students would be, uh, participating in remote learning. I know that's a challenge because we're trying to cohort students and block students almost like a bubble, uh, during the day. But if they go to prime time, then they're with students from cohorts A, B, and C, or one, two, and three. And so that kind of undermines some things. But if the interest is there and there's a way to do that safely and effectively, then the county will try its best to support that. Uh, but I haven't heard anything about that just yet, uh, until we get closer to that point, that Plan B, uh, timeframe. And just a, a explanation, because I saw a couple of questions from yesterday and today about what blended learning actually looks like. When we return, when and if we return on Plan B, we have certain guidelines. We either have to have a fifty percent capacity in the building or a third capacity in the building. Cumberland County is opting for a third capacity of students in the building. What that would mean is that thirty-three percent of students are in the building at any given time. And so we're going for one week of students in the building. All right, so if your child is on cohort one, then your child will come to school, let's say, next week. But then the following two weeks, they will be at home on remote learning. So they will continue with distance learning for those two weeks. The two weeks that your child is at home, students that are in other cohorts will be coming in the building to receive face-to-face instruction from their child's teacher. So that cycle will continue, one week on, two weeks off. So teachers are doing double and triple duty because they're focusing on the kids that are in the, in the, in the building, the thirty percent of the kids that are in the building. Then they're focusing on the sixty-six percent of the kids that are at home on their two-week rotation for distance learning. And we're also providing real-time instruction to those boys and girls who have selected remote learning full-time. So there are so many different pieces. That's why it is incumbent upon, uh, uh, us being clear about the survey. So that once you select blended learning or remote learning full-time, you're pretty much locked into that, at least for the semester, uh, is what I've been explained.
Ms. Velazquez, there's a few other questions that have not been answered.
Okay, um, I was trying to answer as Mr. Tucker was talking. I think I stopped at the question about, um, what the blended is going to look like as far as, it says if one, if the one week on two weeks at home happens, will current teachers be responsible for teaching in-class and remote at the same time? Or will teachers change? Um, so even this afternoon, Mr. Tucker and I were talking about it. Um, as we get closer to Plan B, we'll definitely be able to give you guys, um, an idea of what that's going to look like. Um, we don't have a concrete answer for that just yet. Um, but again, as we get closer to that and we work out the kinks, we'll be able to share that information with you. I don't want to share something and then we end up changing it as we get closer. So, um, we'll be able to share more information as we get closer to transitioning to Plan B. Uh, will there be any after-school activities or clubs as in the past years? Um, as of right now, I don't think we've received any guidelines about, um, whether or not there's going to be any activities when we transition to Plan B. So again, that's, that's something that we're going to have to share with you guys as we get closer to that.
There was a question about lunch sheets. Where do we turn the lunch sheets in?
The lunch sheets that were sent home, you can turn those into one of the, uh, feeding sites. So for example, Stony Point Elementary School is one. So as you're looping in to come grab your lunch, just drop it off with one of the ladies outside.
And I think we're all caught up.
Okay. All right, was there anything in the padlet, Mr. Tucker, that you wanted to highlight?
I'm sorry. There's so much, um. Uh, I mean, I'm trying to look at those that have a similar, a similar tint to them. Uh, there are questions about the going to Plan B and what that exactly looks like. And, um, I don't have all the answers on that one. I do know that, uh, the last question I was just trying to respond to as you were talking was the, um, will the students who are on their remote weeks, will they continue a similar schedule that we have now? Or will they receive live instruction as the teacher is teaching? Um, we, we had a principal meeting today and, and my little small group, we were, we were trying to explore that as well. But we don't have clear guidance on how that's going to be. We don't know if that's going to be something that's going to be uniform district-wide or elementary-wide, or if it's going to be a site-based decision. Uh, I know that when we were doing our summer planning as a school, we were exploring the idea of our teachers essentially pairing up. And so that way you would have two, your child would essentially have their teacher of record, who they currently have, plus an additional teacher as a co-teacher. And essentially, one of those teachers would largely be responsible for the face-to-face group of students that cycle in every week. And then the other teacher would be largely responsible to deliver instruction remotely to the students that are at home. That would help to provide us with some consistency and continuity, uh, for the students. Because it can be difficult as a student to receive instruction live one week and then go two weeks remote. And then for that content and everything to be seamless. So we're looking at doing it that way. But we also have heard some other ideas as well. And so we're going to, uh, weigh all of our options. And if it's left up to us, we will make the best decision that we can based on the information that's given, or we will follow what the county recommends. Trying to see anything else. Yeah, and there are a couple of questions about the length of time as well on the padlet with the, um, face-to-face learning and feeling like the new schedule will have a reduction in time. And that was one of my concerns as well. But when you, when you, when we look at crunching the numbers, it's actually about the same amount of time. It's just that the amount of time is going to be, uh, consolidated. It's all going to be at the same time for the most part. So instead of your child logging in at seven forty and then logging off for twenty or thirty minutes, then logging back in and then logging off for twenty or thirty minutes and logging back in, they're essentially going to be logged in. They're going to bring up their Google Meet with their teacher and they're going to be in that same Google Meet up until lunchtime for the most part. So there won't be a lot of logging in and logging out. So they still will have, I don't want to say ample, they will have FaceTime with their child's teacher, uh, with your child's teacher from the time they log in at eight up until about ten thirty or eleven o'clock. Now that might be reading, math and science slash social studies. Uh, so the teachers will probably go in at a quick clip, but, uh, but they will have that interaction. And then they will have an opportunity after lunch to check in with the teacher on a needed basis.
Okay, we got about five minutes left. Um, I did want to say one quick thing before I forget. Um, and I think for the most part, everybody has, but if you have one of the laptops that was not compatible with Canvas, um, I know that Ms. Quant, our media specialist, she went ahead and she reached out to those parents. Um, please make sure that you guys come to get that laptop switched out. Um, because again, Canvas is the platform that our teachers will be using to assign, uh, the classwork, for them to post their videos. Um, so if your child does not have access to Canvas because of that laptop, it's going to be very, very difficult. So, um, if you receive that email from your teacher, or if your child is having issues with logging into Canvas, please make sure you let us know so we can get that taken care of for you guys. Because we don't want the, the children to fall behind because of that, that device.
If, I see in the chat that we have a school board member that, that has attended. If, uh, Mr. Joseph Source is still here, if you'd like to just, um, introduce yourself and avail yourself to the parents. We appreciate you taking time out and joining us this afternoon.
Okay, the mic's on. For inviting us, uh, inviting me to the meeting. It's, uh, it's great to hear from these parents. It, it's so, um, it's so good that you guys are reaching out to them and answering their questions. Um, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great effort on your part. All your staff is doing a great job. Um, I got some great questions I need to take back to the county too. And, uh, I, I intend to try to find some answers. If I can't get the answers, I'll find someone who will. And, uh, but thank you so much and, um, great job. Appreciate your parents' patience and, and these trying times. And hopefully we can get the kids back into the classrooms soon. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Source. We appreciate that. And for those of you in attendance, he put his information in the, uh, chat boxes, email and contact information. Okay, Ms. Velazquez, do we have anything else?
Um, I did say one last question about, uh, if we anticipate to be back on the twenty-fifth. Um, again, as I stated earlier, um, we're scheduled to, but that could change. We're not sure. Um, if they deem that it's safe for us to come back, then we'll transition to Plan B. But as soon as they go ahead and they make that call, we will be letting our parents know. So just make sure that you guys are checking that remind, that you're checking the dojo, that you're checking. Um, if you see a phone call, a parent link from the school, please make sure you check that voicemail. Um, Mr. Tucker usually leaves very detailed messages for us to, um, know what's going on. Um, so again, just listen out for those, uh, parent link calls. Check our website, um, email us. There's lots of ways that you guys, uh, that we're trying to stay in communication, even though we're all far apart. We're all still trying to stay close together. So, um, we're definitely, we're definitely making those efforts. So just check back with us again. We're not a hundred percent sure, things are just very uncertain right now.
All right, well, again, parents, thanks so much. Uh, teachers, thank you so much for attending as well. Uh, we appreciate your time and that concludes our town hall. Thank you.
Good night, guys.